Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I am Town Moderator Kurt Miller, and I will be reading the warning of the special town meeting into the record. Town of Seymour, warning of special town meeting Tuesday, September sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five, and referendum vote Thursday, October ninth, two thousand twenty-five. The electors and those persons eligible to vote in town meeting of the town of Seymour, Connecticut are hereby warned and notified that a special town meeting will be held at Seymour Town Hall, One First Street, Seymour, Connecticut on Tuesday, September sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five, at six thirty PM for the following purpose. Item one, to discuss a resolution. A, to appropriate sixty million dollars for the construction of a new Bungay Elementary School. B, to finance said appropriation by issuing bonds or notes in an amount not to exceed twenty million dollars. C, to authorize the first selectwoman and treasurer to determine the terms, conditions, and other details of the bonds or notes. D, to declare the town's intent to finance the project so that prior, excuse me, so project costs may be temporarily advanced to authorize the first selectwoman and the treasurer to enter into agreements to bind the town in connection with financing the project, and to determine that, if necessary, financing of the project on a taxable basis is in the public interest. And E, to authorize the first selectwoman to apply for and accept or reject grants and aid for the projects, and to authorize the first selectwoman to execute agreements and other documents on behalf of the town for the project and financing of the project. A copy of the full text of the resolution is on file and available for inspection at the office of the town clerk. The moderator shall adjourn the special town meeting at its conclusion, and the above item shall be submitted to referendum vote on the voting tabulators or paper ballots by town electors and qualified voters for approval or disapproval on Thursday, October ninth, two thousand twenty-five, between the hours of six AM and eight PM. Item one shall be placed upon the voting tabulators or paper ballots under the following heading. Question one, shall the town of Seymour appropriate sixty million dollars for the construction of a new Bungay Elementary School and finance the appropriation by issuing the town's bonds or notes in an amount not to exceed twenty million dollars? Answer yes, answer no. Voters approving said resolution will vote yes, and those opposing said resolution will vote no. Voting will be at the Seymour Community Center, Twenty Pine Street, Seymour, Connecticut, zero six four eight three. Absentee ballots will be available from the town clerk's office. So that is the warning of the meeting. To clarify the proceedings for tonight, those who will be eligible to speak, are any persons eligible to vote at town meeting will be electors of the town and/or owners of at least one thousand dollars of taxable property. Those folks who wish to speak will come up, they will speak into the microphone. Would you like to state that this meeting is being recorded and livestreamed? I ask that you state your full name and full address for the record. Folks will be given three minutes to speak. We have some people here who will try to answer questions as best as we can. The one thing we want to keep in mind, no political official or employee of the town can take a side on this. We can simply present the facts. So I just want everyone to know that, because at some point I'm going to have to take my moderator hat off and put my treasurer hat on. I'm going to be limited to what I can and cannot say when it comes to the financing, but I will do my best to answer the questions as fully as I can. If I stray off the path at all, Attorney Beturlo will make sure he corrects me. So with that, Madam First Selectwoman, unless you have any initial comments you'd like to make, we can open the floor up for questions.
Let's open the floor up for questions. Oh, I'm sorry.
If I may speak.
Absolutely, Attorney Stanek. Oh, slow.
Good evening. My name is Fred Stanek, Twenty Two North Benton Road here in Seymour. I am co-chairperson of the Bungay Elementary School Building Committee, and I just want to impart some basic information about the process that we have gone through and what we are asking you to vote on on October ninth. Bungay School, as most of you know, was built in the early nineteen fifty's and opened its doors in nineteen fifty-four. An addition was completed in nineteen seventy-one, and in nineteen ninety-six, code upgrades and slight expansion of the school was undertaken. Prior to the present building committee, there was a Bungay School Facility Needs Study Committee, which was appointed by the Board of Select Persons on May second, two thousand twenty-three. The committee was charged with the task of assessing the facility needs of Bungay School and to provide a report and recommendations to the Board of Select Persons by December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-three. The committee met throughout the rest of the year and committed a report to the Board of Select Persons on December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, recommending that the board appoint a school building committee, which was appointed on January second, two thousand twenty-four. That committee has continued to meet almost monthly, sometimes twice a month, since January two thousand twenty-four up until the present time. The committee hired, through the Board of Select Persons, Antonazi Associates architects who assisted the committee in developing preliminary plans for a school and cost estimates for the school. The initial mission of the committee was to renovate, come up with a plan to renovate and expand, if necessary, Bungay School. Antonazi Associates did a full analysis of the school with the assistance of the committee and then came up with cost estimates, first for a renovated, as new, Bungay School, second for a new Bungay School, for comparison reasons. The result was that the estimates came in that to build a new school would be less expensive than to renovate the existing school as new. Many people in town government found that hard to believe, including myself at first. But we pushed Antonazi Associates, we challenged them, and we received the information from the estimator and from Antonazi that indeed it would cost less to build a new school. An advantage of that is, with regard to state reimbursement, to build a new school, there's an added ten percent bonus on the reimbursement. So to renovate the school, we would be entitled to a basic reimbursement of about fifty-six percent. To build a new school, a basic reimbursement of about sixty-six percent from the state Since two thousand, we have seen our school district upgrading its facilities. The middle school came online in two thousand, two thousand one, after being built as a new school. Seymour High School was expanded and renovated in two thousand five, two thousand six. In two thousand twelve, Chaffiel-Lopresti School was expanded from Chaffiel School to Chaffiel-Lopresti School and renovated. Now it's Bungay School's turn. We need four high-quality, modern schools in our school district. Bungay does not fit that box right now. We want, we need a new school. The construction of a new Bungay School will complete the renovation of the four schools in our town. On October seventh, two thousand eight, and I have a sign from that referendum, a referendum was held to expand and renovate Chaffiel School into Chaffiel-Lopresti School. The people of the town of Seymour at that time voted in favor of expanding and renovating the school. Now it's Bungay's turn. Some people may say, well, my child or my grandchild is going to Chaffiel-Lopresti. Well, the community stepped forward on October seventh, two thousand eight, to vote for the present Chaffiel-Lopresti School, which is an outstanding facility and a school of distinction. It's now Bungay's turn, and we ask the people vote for the project of renovating or of building a new Bungay School. A new school will bring the four schools into the twenty-first century with regard to health and safety issues and with regard to educational specifications for a quality school. Also, safety issues will be addressed with regard to bus ingress and egress and other vehicles ingress and egress. There will be two means of ingress and egress to a school, one for buses, one for all other vehicles. It will improve the safety issues that are extant at Bungay Road during the school, beginning of school, especially beginning of school and the end of school day. I often recite or cite President Abraham Lincoln, who stated, "The most important subject a people may be engaged in is education." We owe it to our children, our future generations, to have quality facilities to deliver quality educational services to our children. I can talk about the needs of the school, if anybody has any questions, but I'll leave it for other people to speak at this time. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jay Penya. I'm a first-year Union Carpenter apprentice, one of twenty-one carpenters, Union carpenters in Seymour. And last year I became a homeowner in this very nice town, and I feel very proud of that. You know, my wife and my daughter had to step out because my daughter was making a lot of noise. So I'm sorry for that. So actually, I, I'm not aware of any protocol, so please, you know, advise if I should modify my request or questions. So basically, what I wanted to know is if there's been any discussion regarding any kind of apprentice involvement or any engagement programs, to see if we can get some, you know, Union guys to build potentially our kid's school. You know, so it's kind of something that I, I mean, I've always wanted to be a carpenter. I was a airport firefighter before this, so I kind of sacrificed a lot, and I'd like it to mean something, you know? Aside from that, you know, I understand that this is a prevailing wage job, and it falls under statute thirty-one dash fifty-two. And I understand that if we're going to be that far invested into something, and if we're going to be paying a comparable rate to a Union apprentice or, you know, journeyman, then I think we should probably get our money's worth, you know? And as somebody who's going in this program, I've, excuse me, I've been training for about a year now. I think the quality speaks for itself, you know, when you see a Union job. There's a lot of negative stigmas that come along with it, but there's also some positive things. And, you know, looking at all the things that have been going on around the state, I think it's safe to say, I'm sure you guys are all familiar of what I'm talking about, but there's been some jobs shut down, and there's been a lot of, you know, tax fraud and words like that thrown around, you know? And I'm worried that that's going to be something that's going to tarnish the legacy of this school. And I'm worried that that's something that's going to sidetrack this, this mission of ours, you know? So if there's anything that I can do, if there's anybody I can talk to or, you know, connect you guys with, I'd be more than willing to, you know? Whatever I can do, I live at Heinz Street, we probably shuffle through the same produce and Stop &amp; Shop, so I hope, I hope to see you guys a lot more often. And specifically, I don't know whose idea it was, but these livestreams really help break down the intimidation behind being part of this process as somebody who hasn't really, you know, my parents weren't really involved in their community as much as I'd like them to be, and I kind of want to make that generational shift, you know? Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? State your name and address for the record, please.
Tony Shiverick, Tony Carriage. I'm sorry, because I know that I probably missed some information in the beginning, between Bungay School, Bungay Street being closed and the highway being repaired, I got here late. But I know that the last time we were at the meeting, I questioned, let me read, the first selectwoman, about the cost, which you alluded to, that I had read in the newspaper, the dollar amounts, the estimates being given showed that the cost to renovate was going to be less than to build a new school. And I kept hearing this, I kept seeing numbers with percentages, and yet I was being told it was the opposite. And just before I came here, I went to the state website about projects for school, and they said that, it says on there that the reimbursement rate for remodeling is higher than for building a new school. So do you have any actual numbers that you can show us today that shows these, how these numbers, how this, how this, the building of the school is a better deal? Another thing is, you know, my kids, my kids went homeschool and never went to any school here, but I don't understand how we think that it's okay to spend almost seventy million dollars for a new building. I don't understand in what universe we live in that we think it's okay to spend that kind of money. And I know that we're not spending it all, but we're still spending a good chunk of it. And so have any, was only one company looked into to do this job? Were there others? And was an effort made, are we, are we getting the Cadillac of a remodel, of a rebuild? Were we getting what we just need, the basics? That's my question.
Thank you. So Mr. Stanek, I'll defer the first, or the questions that were just asked about the process the building committee went through, and then when you're done, I'll go through and I'll speak about the financing aspects of it.
Yes, and if I may ask Mr. Losasso of Antonazi Associates to talk about the differential in the reimbursement issue, I'll speak.
Good evening. My name is Michael Losasso. I'm with Antonazi Associates, and we're located at two, two seventy-one Fairfield Avenue in Bridgeport, Connecticut. Specifically with regard to the reimbursement rates, the gentleman that spoke is correct that a renovation project is a ten percent higher reimbursement than, than general construction, new construction. However, in the instance of this particular project and other projects that can demonstrate that new construction is a less expensive alternative to renovation, the state actually passed legislation, I believe in two thousand twenty-three, which permits an additional ten percent be applied to the project. So in that aspect, the reimbursement associated with renovation is equivalent to the renovation, I'm sorry, to new construction reimbursement. Any other clarifications I could provide to that?
I think that's perfect, Michael. Thank you.
Thank you.
So with, I guess with regards to the cost, because I'm sure that question's going to come up at some point. So working with the committee and, Michael, as the town treasurer, I ran through and ran several different scenarios on cost. As the committee has chosen to build a new school with the assumption that we would receive that ten percent additional rate, the state of Connecticut would be reimbursing the town for sixty-six point six percent of the costs. So the sixty million dollar school would be projected to cost the town of Seymour twenty million dollars. So to come up with a comparison of value, value of building a new facility versus taking our existing facility and renovating it, so that's essentially putting on new roof, new windows, new heating, just how you would renovate your house, the projections of that would be that would cost about fifteen million dollars. That fifteen million dollars would receive zero reimbursement from the state of Connecticut. While it would fix the structure of the building, you know, the bones, the walls, the things like that, doesn't do anything for the educational space. I'm not an educator, but the requirements for teachers and educators has trained, changed drastically over the last twenty or thirty years. Schools need to be different, so that is the reason why this avenue is being considered. So if people were to vote this down, again, I can only state the facts. What would happen is this town would then need to renovate the building. So if we go through the process as it's being presented, sixty million dollar initial cost, a twenty million dollar cost then to the town, we would borrow over a thirty-year period. The principal and interest payments would be one million, two hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars a year, which is a mil in, a mil cost of point six five nine zero. So that would go in in the first year, and it would stay level thereon in. If we went with the fifteen million dollar renovation, the principal and interest payments would be one million, one hundred and sixty-one thousand, five hundred and four dollars, or a mil impact of point six two eight one. So for point zero three mils, that's the difference between building a brand-new school or doing the renovations, because we're leveraging the large impact that we are receiving from reimbursement from the state of Connecticut. This is all done in today's dollars. This is all done in comparison with today's mil rate. This is all done with estimates of interest rates that are in effect today. We know and what we've seen is that interest rates seem to be coming down, so the potential is those numbers could change should interest rates go down. In fairness, if interest rates go up, those numbers could go up. So looking at a house that's assessed at three hundred thousand dollars, I just picked a nice even number, that person in the current system at twenty-six point seven two mils would pay eight, is paying eight thousand, sixteen dollars a year in taxes. If we were to build a new school, borrow the twenty million dollars, the projection is that would be twenty-seven point five seven mils. It would cost that family a hundred and ninety-eight dollars a year. If you did that same assumption, but you used the renovating the fifteen million dollars, that family would pay ten dollars less, a hundred and eighty-eight dollars. So those are the simple facts of the estimates of the numbers. I can't opine as to which, which is better in the long run. Everyone needs to make that decision themselves, but those are the estimates as they currently stand today. So with that, I'll take my treasurer's hat off, and I will put my moderator's hat on. Are there any other?
I have a simple question.
Ma'am, ma'am, you need to go up to the microphone?
My goodness.
I don't make the rules, ma'am. I'm sorry. The guy next to me does.
My name is Assunta Snell of Twenty Two Charles Road. Got that? Okay, so my question is simply is, you guys want to build this new school. Where's the plans for that stuff? How are we supposed to make that determination if it's something we want or don't want? I mean, all you're saying is new school. What does that mean? And if you were going to renovate, what would that mean? What does this renovation consist of?
Mr. Stanek?
That's, I mean, to me, those are important questions in order for me to make a judgment.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Mr. Stanek? Or do you want to call Michael for that?
Mrs. Bennett would like to speak, but I would like to briefly say that we do not have final plans for the construction. We have preliminary plans, conceptual plans. We have conceptual plans because we are not going to have the final plans drawn until we know we have the reimbursement amount from the state of Connecticut. So the final plans will be available. We are designing a school that, we have specifications submitted to the state of Connecticut, and it's going to be a twenty-first century school. We have a rendering of the school concept, but we don't have the final plans yet. After the referendum, if the referendum passes, then the building committee will put out an RFP for architects to submit bids for the final design. Antonazi Associates may or may not be the final design architect. We don't know. We'll wait to see what comes in, the plans, as well as the cost of that, so we don't know for sure. A renovation as new would mean that the existing building would end up being retrofitted with modern HVAC, new windows, new doors, probably new ceilings, new flooring, high-tech technology, Wi-Fi, and it would involve displacing children during the course of the school, two years, probably two years of construction, reconstruction, and we would have to rent modular classrooms to put the students in as we boot modular classrooms, which are very expensive and would displace the children. With the plan that's in place, the children will go to school, the existing Bungay School, and when the new school is built, they will then all move at once to the new school.
Rebecca Bennett, twenty-one A Cozy Lane. Not only have I been a building committee member, I was on the Bungay, bleh, Bungay Building Facility Needs Committee, but I'm also in the Bungay School every single day. I live in that building, I know the needs, and I could tell you what people are failing to see too is that we did so much extensive research. We're all taxpayers here. I live in Seymour also. We looked for what was the best solution, not only for the children, but for our town. Our town, by, you know, I always bring in my in-laws, when they moved here, they were looking for a school to send my oldest brother-in-law to, and that's what drew them into Seymour, because at that time, Bungay School was new. What we need to do to Bungay School to make it safe, to make it what it needs to be, currently we have students working in the hallway. Our special ed specs aren't even met because we don't have the room. We've outgrown our nineteen fifty's space. Kids who are at the highest need are working at desks in the hallway because there's nowhere for special education teachers to push in to help them. We talk about renovation. Some of these students, and I could tell you, I work with some that have disability, ADHD, trying to put them in a portable trailer to learn for two years when they're already two years behind from COVID. And now they got banging hammers and they got people walking by. It takes a swirl to distract them. The last thing we need is to put them two years further behind because we're putting them in portable trailers and portable bathrooms while we're renovating. We are telling you here tonight that there is a ten-dollar difference to have a brand-new school in this town over renovating, that that's fifteen million dollars that we know right up front. That doesn't mean that the next year, there wouldn't be a million more dollars in renovations, because I could tell you, being in that building and living there every day, there's a lot that needs to be done. We still live there, so we don't emphasize and, and point out every little thing because that is our home until this is done. But I will tell you, from being there, I definitely think it's very, very important that we take this seriously, and that we, when we talk about rebuilding and where, it will be right on the field at Bungay School. We're not looking for another area. Antonazi often told us that the state prefers us to rebuild. Why? Because they don't want us coming for asking money again within the next twenty years. So that's why they're putting this initiative out. The only renovations that they've proven since COVID, I think, has been Hartford, and it's because their land's stamped. They don't have the area to build new buildings. Otherwise, they've been saying they want, and they're pushing for this. And there's a reason why we need to get to this point, the same as everybody else. So I hope that answered some of your questions, and I appreciate your time.
My name's Andy North for Jello's Farm Road, Seymour, Connecticut, and I just wanted to chime in. I agree with everything that Becky said. I'm on the building committee, and I just wanted to let you know how I became involved on the building committee. I have one son in the school, he's now in third grade, and my other son just went to kindergarten. And I went over to the superintendent's office one day because my kid couldn't afford, he's a great kid, loves going to school, and they sent him home because the air, we don't have air conditioning in most parts of that school. of that school, right? It's too hot. And I'm like, this is crazy, okay? So I went, you know, we were talking one day, and I said, I wanted to donate air conditioners. I tried. I called my friend who's done work on the school, and we could not do that, because the electrical system can't handle it. That's how I got involved in the building committee. And I got to tell everybody in this room, I built my house in Seymour, haven't lived there the whole time, but two thousand and six, right on Jellos Farm. I love this town. It's a great town. I've, you know, born and raised in the valley, and Seymour deserves this. The kids deserve it. This, this school is a gem, okay? I've lived all over the country, west coast, down south. Bungay School is a gem. The teachers are amazing. I, I can't tell you, my kids get up in the morning, I mean, I'm, you know, relatively new father, five and eight years old, they can't wait to go to school. They love it there. I mean, it is a great part of our community. And for the life of me, being on this committee, all the time that was spent, going through the cost estimates, I mean, we've been beating you guys up for, I've been almost on it for two years, and, you know, we could throw fifteen plus million dollars out the window, or we could spend and make a big investment in our community. The state of Connecticut is going to pay about two-thirds, I mean, a big chunk of this, and it's going to be a great asset to the town. And the tax differential, I mean, you know, again, for some, it might be a lot, for others, I mean, it's an investment in our community. So I just want to say, I want to thank everybody on the committee, all the hard work that's gone into this, and, you know, I plan on staying here for the rest of my life. I own the ice cream shop in Shelton. I love the valley. And we owe it to ourselves to owe it to the kids. My kids might not see it, but I don't care. I mean, I want the kids to go to this beautiful place with these great teachers, because there's no other school like it. I mean, I have not seen anything like it.
Is there any other public comment?
Good evening. Ed Zehall, five Davis Road. I'm here to voice two things. I'm in favor of the new school, but I'm not in favor of it as it's planned. Why can't we bring in portable classrooms? Have the kids go into portable classrooms and rebuild the new school on the existing lot where Bungay School is now at a higher elevation? When I'm down on that field, and I'm looking up, you're talking twelve feet elevation. You're going to have water problems in that basement. You're going to dig a footing for that school. It's going to be close to twenty-five to thirty feet below where that basement is now. Water flows downhill. I know that from stand. Building the new school will attract young families to Seymour, which we need with kids, and they'll be taxpayers. I'm not against the new school. I'm not against paying another hundred dollars in my tax to pay for the school, but I think careful consideration has to be taken into account of the elevation of where the Bungay School is now, and the slope and the elevation where you want to put the current school. I think you're going to run into water problems big time. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
Hi. I'm Nikki O'Toole, twenty-nine Deer Run Drive. Most of you know me as the realtor in town. For the sake of our kids and next generation and our legacy, we need a new school. The school was originally built early fifties. When I sell old houses, it's a money pit. The last thing we need is a money pit renovating and re-renovating to address the new school and the location. When a builder builds a new home, he tries to compensate for that issue. He uses trenches, whatever, to bring the water away, okay? To find an avenue for it. What's nice is we can continue to build new. Not only when you renovate, and I have to go back to what I know, which is homes, and a building of that age is no different. When you start to renovate, and all you're doing is changing your windows, changing your doors, changing your siding, you know that the house keeps creaking. When you open those walls up, you've got electrical and you've got plumbing. Plumbing from nineteen fifty-four is an issue. And if you have it in your house, you ought to check that out too, okay? You start breaking down, we will well exceed that fifteen million dollars, and we will get not a penny from the state of Connecticut. That's going to squarely land on our shoulders. Right now, we have an option to get something from the state, and it sounds like it's more than fifty percent. I'm in a hundred percent, okay? Just moving the building and keeping all of the structure where it is, I think is a wonderful thing, because we're not trekking our kids any further than we trek them already, okay? Most of us don't let our kids even walk to the neighborhood next to us anymore. So our driving change is not going to change, okay? It's building a new school, getting sixty-seven, almost sixty-seven percent back, and we only have to pick up a small amount? You can't, can't lose. You just can't lose. Our legacy will go on for another fifty to sixty years, and we will have the room for all of those children that need the extra space. And God, we have such a great education system in this town. We really do. My grandkids are third generation, same school, same classrooms, okay? So we really need a new one. Thank you very much.
Just before the next speaker goes, the Board of Select, Board of Select Persons meeting, excuse me, that was scheduled to start at seven o'clock, will begin at the conclusion of this meeting. Are there any other public speakers?
Hi, my name is Lori Nico, nine Jefferson Street. I've been in town for thirty-seven years, and my kids did go to Bungay School. And it was old then, and I do believe it needs, I do believe a new school would be the right way to go. My question is, or my, is if we don't build it for two more years and the price goes up, is the percentage still going to be only sixty-seven percent? Or is there a chance it'll go up? Any idea?
I mean, I can answer that, or Michael, or Fred, if you want to answer that, it's up to you. We apply for the state reimbursement, and the state reimbursement is locked in, so.
Is it locked in? So say if you get a price today, it's sixty million or whatever, but then it ends up being seventy million?
We can only spend sixty million.
Okay. So then obviously someone has to keep their thumb on the purse, huh? Okay.
Yes.
And then the all-in number will be, which I understand, my, I understand the concept is you're going to put the school on the field, take down the school, put a new field and new parking. Is that correct? Okay. And that number will be all in, correct? Doing all of that? Is that correct? Okay. All right. That's all you want to go? Thanks.
Is there any other?
Hi, guys. So this is my first time doing this.
Excuse me, just say your name and address directly. I don't mean to cut you off. Sorry.
Lilly Moore, fifteen Hyridge Road, Seymour, Connecticut. So I am an alumni of Seymour Bungay School. And to put it into perspective, I'm also the oldest of thirteen grandchildren and a third-generation Bungay School alumni. My parents, my parents went there, my aunts and uncles went there, my grandparents went there. And I also have cousins, and to put it into perspective, I am seventeen years older than some of those cousins, who will be either attend, who either will be attending or are currently attending Bungay School. And so for me, Bungay is not just a school, it is the foundation of Seymour. And right now, that foundation is showing its age, and I'm glad that most people in here are expressing the same sympathies as I am. And, and I remember this from the time I was in kindergarten to when I left in fifth grade, there are, with, at least within the kids' population, there are a lot of comparisons between Chapel Hill and Bungay. I remember growing up, there were kids that would be moving to Chapel Hill de Presty just because it was nicer, and it had air conditioning, it had better infrastructure. And there was always that silly little rivalry between Bungay kids and Chapel Hill kids. And there was that gap between the rich school and then the poor school. And I really want to enunciate that kids do notice what their, what their school looks like, and what their school is essentially becoming. And yeah, kids notice that. And again, this creates, creates a quiet divide, like us versus them, and that doesn't need to exist. And every Seymour student deserves the same pride in where they come from. And so now I know one of the biggest concerns people have is money. I'm not going to say the T-word. And it's a fair, it's a fair concern, it's a fair question, but Bungay, investing in Bungay is investing in Seymour's future. And so when you rebuild a school, you aren't just creating a better space for learning and, and just for the students in general, you also are creating an environment where families want to come to Seymour. And when families want to come to Seymour, those taxes end up going down, because there are more people to pay those taxes, which has been enunciated by everybody in this room. But property values rise, new residents bring new revenue, and in the long run, rebuilding Bungay School would actually help lower the tax burden, because more people will be contributing. And so, and also, and again, this was also enunciated even by the facts, by the treasurer, an outdated school costs us more in the long run. Energy fixes, constant repairs, patchwork fixes, every dollar spent on temporary fixes is going to cost us more in the long run, when we can invest in a permanent solution. And it's proven by school districts across the country, across the state, where they have invested in permanent solutions for new schools and for new infrastructure, and their revenue has gone up. And so beyond numbers, school are where children spend the majority of their life. Everybody in here can attest to that. I can attest to that. I am sick of it. These are where friendships are formed, where identities begin to take root, where pride in the community is planted. I'm so proud to be a resident of Seymour, Connecticut, in every classroom, in every hallway, in every playground. We love our playground. And I want my younger cousins, my, whether that be my second cousins, my third cousins, even friends and family, I want them to feel that, and I want them to be in that space that inspires them rather than limits them with an old school. And so I'm not asking you to see Bungay as just an old building that needs repairs and as like a burden. I'm asking you to see this as a piece of, a piece of infrastructure that has been here for years, and that will continue to be here longer than, maybe I will be alive, maybe longer than any of us will be alive. And giving the next generation a school they could walk into would be the best stuff. So thank you.
Beverly Loudon, twenty Hickory Lane, Seymour. My question, first of all, I'm definitely for a new school, having been taught in a school system for thirty-nine years, not here, and going through renovation, and now suffering respiratory problems with, you know, fixing the school. My question was, is, the twenty million dollars that was for the renovation, was that also, were the modular things included in that fee?
I'm not sure what you mean by included.
Well, to, to fix the school, renovate the school, it was twenty million?
No, it's, so fifteen million dollars, somebody from the committee can jump in, but the fifteen million dollars was an estimate on repairs that were needed. So that could or could not include the cost of the modulators. It could also mean that we need to spend an additional million dollars the next year. It was just to put an estimate out there based on the architect's best estimate of what that cost would be. The current setup to spend sixty million dollars and then ultimately bond twenty million, building the school in a new location, does not require modulators, does not require the kids to move. They would just simply move in from the old building into the new building when it's done.
Right. And that's the way to go. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Hi, my name is Kristen Bruno. I live at Ten McConney Court. I am the current vice chair of the Board of Education. I just wanted to commend the building committee and speak a little bit to the process, because as Attorney Stanek mentioned, they have been meeting at least once, once a month for, since January of twenty twenty-four. They have made presentations to the Board of Select Persons. They have made presentations to the Board of Finance. I was able to attend a community forum where they took with the Andrazian Associates, took input from the community about what we were looking for in a school. So there is definitely a process that has involved a lot of study, a lot of accountability, and that continues if this referendum passes and we build, we move forward with building a new school. There will continue to be the building committee overseeing, reporting out to the town bodies. And when the state is reimbursing that amount, there's a lot of accountability to the state as well, and a lot of meetings and oversight on that end. So I just wanted to assure people and share that information. Now I want to speak from my heart, because I have two children, twenty-one and twenty-four years old, that attended Bungay School, and it gave them since a tremendous foundation for their learning and for their character as people. I was, I was able to work there for two years. I've done bus duty in that loop, having to stop the buses so the parents could go through. There are, there's so much need in that building. Things like small spaces for reading instruction and intervention, technology, safety and security, the opportunity to give our future students the type of learning environment that they need and that the previous speaker spoke about, to build their friendships, to develop their identities. I hope the town will support it, because it's time, it's beyond time. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
Hello, Nicole Harriet McCula, fifty-eight West Street. I do not need to reiterate all the facts that we have shared and all of the wonderful insight that has brought us here, but I am going to ask for us to continue this conversation. I am a part of the Bungay School Rebuild Alliance, and so I'm just going to share some upcoming dates, so you can confidently vote yes on October ninth. October ninth, between six AM and eight PM, the vote will take place at Seymour Community Center. We will have after-school care at an off-site location. We're actually finalizing those facts tonight for anybody listening and for everybody here. We will have a one-hour max of childcare, because we understand it is very challenging to navigate work, life, all the things. The next thing I would like to share is we are doing two Bungay School community walkthroughs. Those will be on September twenty-fourth at six-thirty PM, and at September twenty-ninth at seven-thirty PM. That will take place at Bungay Elementary School. We will also be having community Zoom Q and A regarding the Bungay Elementary School building project, and that is on October second at nine o'clock AM. And on October seventh at seven-thirty PM, Zoom links will be made available electronically very soon. We are working on that. If anybody is really excited about this project and would like to get more involved, we have lawn signs for each of you. And so we have a link that you can jump onto. You could also check out BungaySchoolRebuildAlliance.com. You could visit our socials at Bungay School Rebuild Alliance. You could also speak to any one of us at any time, anywhere. We are available. We are passionate about this project. We are very excited. We are very excited to see this vote pass. And we're very excited for this new school. Other than that, I don't want to speak out of line, but I have been working and chatting and really learning frankly about the process of absentee voting and becoming perhaps a registered voter if you are not already. And from my knowledge, and correct me if I am wrong, but I believe, and I get it, life is wild for all of us. Absentee votes, they are available. You can get the registration form at any time and submit it, and they will send you an absentee ballot. Or you can pop into this building anytime after September 22nd. You can get your form and you can make your vote on the same day. Again, my name is Nicole. I'm really proud of the work that everybody's been doing. I could understand the reluctance and the hesitation as any town grows, but we are here for this, and I hope you well. Continue being good to one another, and I'm excited to see you at the new school. Have a great night.
Is there any other public comment? Is there any other public comments? Asking one last time, is there any other public comment? Hearing no other public comment, I will adjourn the special town meeting to a referendum vote on the voting tabulators or paper ballots by town electors and qualified voters for approval or disapproval on Thursday, October 9th, 2025, between the hours of 6:00 AM and 8:00 PM at the Seymour Community Center. And with that, Madam First Select, we will close the meeting at 7:21 PM.
Before we start the Board of Select Persons meeting, I will give the time for the room to...